Okay, Ashley, can I have roll call, please?
Cavalier.
Here.
Cressel.
Here.
Clatt.
Here.
Bedbrotten.
Here.
Melby.
Here.
Jordy.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Okay, it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address the council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda, may come to the podium, state your first and last name and address, please. Hearing nothing from the council, Ashley.
Chad, is there anyone waiting on the city's phone bridge?
The bridge is empty, I will close.
Thank you.
Agent logged off.
No presentations, this brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from tonight's agenda?
Your Honor, we request to add 8.04, a resolution to hire a community development director, effective September 30th, 2021.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? Thank you, Dawn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Clayton, discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Cavalier.
Here.
Aye. Cressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbrotten.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jordy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Hey, this brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Hearing none, can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
No move.
Thank you, Joe, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Wayne?
Wayne.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbrotten.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jordy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Okay, no public hearings, this brings us to the regular agenda, Ashley.
Yes, Your Honor, item 8.01 is a resolution adopting the proposed 2022 tax levy and preliminary 2022 fund budget and setting a public budget meeting date, Your Honor.
Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, Your Honor.
Thank you, Delain, no second by Clayton, discussion, Amy, could you fill in a little bit?
Yes, I will. Before, if I may, before we get started on the resolution, the, our partners at the county tax office suggested a change in terminology in one of our worksheets from household to residential homesteads. So I will, Chad, would you mind putting up my PDF for me? I will say if there are questions about residential homesteads, please direct those to the county tax office. For definitions, if you qualify, how to apply, we have simply changed the verbiage on our worksheet. The residential homestead is how we did calculate this worksheet. It is the same calculation that the League of Minnesota Cities use, if you ever pull that up and take a look, so, just a change in terminology. You will see changes in blue. The line on the, and I'm sorry, I did not, I did not get this printed out for you, I meant to do that. The line on the $200,000 commercial actually is lower in value. I had an error in that I had applied a 2% tax rate to that entire line and actually the first 150,000 should be at a, I think it's a one and a half tax rate. So that in fact lowers, on a 12% annual tax bill, lowers at $483 from what we saw before, on a 10% that's in the blue, that's lowered by 471. And I will get, I will send that out to you, I apologize for not having that printed. That's the only change as other than the terminology from household to residential homestead. But Councilmember Erickson, I thought you may be particularly interested in that, but...
All helps.
Yeah, so, just splitting that rate, so, brings that down a little bit, and I wanted to identify that. I will make that available to you in an email. And then, if we can move on to the resolution, what you see there is our tax levy and our tax abatement levy, which we saw as a special levy on our worksheet. We got some firmed up numbers, working with our county partners on our projected 2022 housing abatement expense. And actually, that brought our levy down about $5,000 when we made those adjustments on the budget expense line. So that's down just a little bit, doesn't take us off of that 10%, but in both examples of changes, we are moving down, which I believe is in the right direction. Doesn't make a huge change there, but as a reminder, we do need to certify this in the form of the resolution to our county by September 30th. This resolution also sets the public budget meeting, which we often refer to as the truth in taxation hearing, where we do a presentation for the public. We do plan to implement some of the tools. Councilmember Jordy did send us an example that I really liked, that was kind of an illustration of how tax dollars are used. We're going to create something to include in our presentation. Often you will see charts and how your tax dollars are used. That is set for December 13th, at 6:15 PM, that's prior to a regular city council meeting. And then I will stand for any questions. This does put us at the 10% that we, at our last Ways and Means Committee meeting, by consensus agreed to set as our max levy, so that is what was used to produce your, your numbers here in your resolution. And then, as I said, with some firmed up numbers on the housing tax abatements, did bring that total levy down about $5,000.
Further discussion?
Well, I had a person ask me a question about, now this, this new amount, is that going to be added on to last year's, or is that going to be the new tax? And I said, that should be your new tax, not added on to.
On the, on the top part, is that what you mean, on the?
Well, okay, like saying, a hundred and fifty thousand dollar house, it's seven hundred and some dollars there.
That's an estimated, what the annual tax bill would be, not in addition.
It wouldn't be, it would not.
No, and that's...
They thought it was added on to last year.
No, no.
No, I don't think so.
And these are just estimates, of course, we can't say what any particular household will be, but that's based on a 10% increase over last year's certified tax levy. And that would be what the estimated annual tax bill would be for the city portion, of course. That's important to clarify. Here, we're just talking about city, but would not be in addition to their last year.
Right, that would be just our total tax.
Right, an estimate, yep, yep.
Okay. I figured that's what it was, but I thought, well, I better ask.
Yeah, no, that's good, that, that's good to clarify. I've actually heard that question come up a couple of times, so I'm glad we had the opportunity to, to talk about that again. We are working on a, a housing abatement report to bring to you. I could have rushed and had it to you tonight, but to be fair and to give you the most accurate information and be able to answer your questions, we want to be able to show you what rolled off this year, what new ones. You'll actually be seeing a resolution in the upcoming meetings for a couple of new ones that haven't been before you yet. We worked with our partners at the county to get some numbers and values, so we can be prepared to bring that to you, so that is in the works.
Further discussion? Hearing none, can I have roll call, please?
Cavalier.
Aye.
Cressel.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbrotten.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jordy.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Your Honor.
Yes.
I failed to mention one point of clarification that I was planning to make. May I have one more minute? Okay, I'll be brief. I learned late last week, and I was out a bit last week with a sick child at home, so juggling between home and office, that there were questions about the approximately $40,000 that I had mentioned in moving our levy 1%. After getting some information in front of me and working back and forth with the county, what I was referring to was what would move the tax rate 1%, where that was, I introduced confusion into the conversation. What we were looking at and talking about was moving our levied dollars 1%. That is, I think, right at 23,000 off the base of last year. That does not change what you saw in numbers. It only changes how I referred to that shift in dollars. So I believe, let me log in here, I think it is 23,000 to 22, maybe.
Instead of, what was it, forty some?
Yes, so internally, when we were working through that, we were using both the dollars and the rate to see what changes would make. So the 41,000 wasn't particularly wrong for an estimate, but it was not the clearest way to talk, and it did not line up with how we looked at it. What you were seeing is a percentage change in levied dollars, not levied rate. So going forward, the rate will simply exist as a result of our tax levy set, and we won't refer to that going forward. So I apologize for introducing that confusion. If it was harder for any of you or any members of our public to understand that, and I would be happy at any point if someone wants to look at that further or talk about that further.
They were talking eighteen something from the year before to, to that forty-one. They were figuring, trying to figure out, there's questions asked of why that, this is what you're referring to?
I didn't go back, yes, and I didn't go back and calculate farther back than last year, but a 1% change off of the certified tax levied dollars in 2021 was 2,322,000. That is a $23,220 needed to shift the levied tax dollars 1%, one way or the other. So the approximately 41,000 was actually to shift the rate. And so we won't talk about it in that way anymore, because that is, it is more confusing, even if we use that internally, our rate will simply exist as a result of that, so I apologize.
Why does that equal the same, then, if it's just because of the numbers, the way you're using them? Is that what you're saying?
The, to shift the rate 1%, essentially shifts your levied dollars 2%. So, is that what you were asking? I'm sorry, maybe I misunderstood that.
Well, just like, it's confusing, you go from 40,000 to 23,000, and none of the other numbers change.
Because what I was telling you was that, to shift 1%, it was 41,000. That would be to shift the rate, that 59.490, or whatever the rate lands at. What we needed to be talking about was the percentage and dollar amount needed to shift your levied dollars. And that's the 23,220. So it did not, in fact, change the numbers that you saw, because the calculations that we used were in fact calculating the percentage on the levied dollars. But as a worksheet and as a double check, we were internally looking at what that did to the rate as well. So my advice and suggestion would be we not talk about the rate anymore, because really, when we look at it, we're looking at our levied dollars and the shift increase or decrease or flat over last year. So I apologize, I, I introduced that confusion and I...
So every, every 1% of levied dollars is 23,000?
220, yes, and I didn't go back and calculate prior years. I could do that, but I just didn't have that, that time now. So that, there may be at one, that was at 18,000, I did not go back and verify that.
That's every, that's 1% is a 23,220.
1% shift in levied dollars off of our, our certified tax levy last year, yep, yep. So I, I meant to bring that up, and thank you for, that was a little longer than one minute, but thank you.
That's okay, thank you, Amy. Further discussion? Hearing, I guess we already had a motion, it carried, motion carries. Moving on.
Item 8.02 is a resolution accepting the 2020 audited financials from Brady Martz &amp; Associates, P.C., Your Honor.
Thank you, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
I make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Dawn. Discussion, Amy?
Your Honor, Kim Durbin from Brady Martz is here to just run through our audit with us. We have worked with her at staff level. She is helping us a little bit today, do some things that are not particularly related to this audit report you have in front of you. Kim, do you mind just coming up to the podium?
All right, I'll try not to push you guys to sleep. Have a tendency to do that. Once again, our firm performed the audit of the city of Cookston for the year ending December 2020. There were, you know, a lot of internal changes, and there were actually a lot of different things kind of happening in 2020, as we all know, as much as we want to block it from our memory. But overall, when we look at the governmental activities and business-type activities, the total assets of the city actually decreased by 1.9% or 1.5 million dollars. Deferred outflows, and I kind of hate talking about deferred outflows, what really what those are are almost like obligation or prepays. And they're all related to pension. But there was a change in that, in that $600,000 decrease. And the only reason I bring that up is because it will help kind of answer how net position changes when you have a 1.5 decrease in the change of total assets. And liabilities went up only 284,000, so that's good. You don't have any long-term debt beyond compensated absences. No bonds were issued, so that's kind of been a very stable number for the past four years. And then the deferred inflows did decrease as well, and that, that's related to the pensions as well. The timing of when payments are due on PERA, and that actually decreased as well. Overall, net position for the city, and that's government-wide and business-type activities, did decrease 1.1 million dollars. All of that kind of is summarized on page eight, where we kind of show your very broad perspective of your classifications of assets, liabilities, and what they were last year compared to this year. And that's the only really comparative schedules that you get, is in the management discussion and analysis. And most people don't really even care to look at the government-wide financial statements, because we put them on a full GAAP basis, and really, city governments like to know what their fund balances. They want to know what their current resources are and how it reflects to their budget. So we're going to jump to page 15. And that's kind of an overview of the balance sheet for the city, for your government entities. And you've got the general fund column, and you've got 4.8 million dollars of total assets. And those are just current, your current assets, cash, your investments, and anything that is collectible within the 90-day window. And that actually held pretty strong. General fund only decreased by about 400,000 over the prior year in total assets. Liabilities also went down by 100,000, so that is also a very good trend, giving, yeah, the net fund balance changed to be about $250,000 decrease. The other, the other major funds held pretty steady. Improvement Fund, that's where your special assessment collections are received and where we hold the, the balances to be collected on the deferred special assessments and what comes in. And that actually increased 800,000. And typically, that is what annually you are receiving in your special assessments, that you guys have approved and have hanging out there to be collected over the next 10 years or whatever each of those projects' terms were approved at. Park and Rec held pretty steady, with only a decrease in about $124,000. And everything else that doesn't show up there, the airport and library and whatever, that's all lumped into the non-major governmental funds. And that is very close to last year, only about a $70,000 shift. So, all in all, when we flip to the next page, which is 16, that's kind of where your fund balance is for your different major funds and the general fund are. We've got unassigned fund balance in the general fund of $3 million, which, in the past, we've always kind of talked about that, well, how does that, how does that compare? Does that seem like a healthy reserve or unreserved available resource for the city? And we always kind of go back and say, well, your total budgeted expenditures for the year in the general fund roughly is $5 million. So if you have $3 million of unrestricted, unassigned fund balance, you've got more than half of a year's worth of expenditures that you could roll out and cover, should there be some extenuating circumstance that would prevent the city from having available resources.
Is there a certain number that should be, roughly?
Well, and that, we don't really have a good answer for that, but typically, what used to, the state auditor used to say is about three months' worth was healthy. I like to look at it like this. The way it works in, in Minnesota governments is you budget, and when do you get your tax levy dollars? You don't get your first tax levy dollars until June. That's when you get your first county settlement. You look at your next big revenue source for a governmental fund, and that's your LGA. When do you get that? Get that in June. So you almost, really, it's kind of dysfunctional. You almost do really have to rely on a six-month to a four-month probably cash reserve to finance current operations until you get the money to recover where you were at. You guys do collect franchise fees from the utilities, which is a big revenue source for the general fund as well, that helps kind of cover all that. But that, that is the dynamics of the way the city...
You think it's...
Cash flows.
Can I jump in real fast? We do have a fund reserve, a fund balance reserve policy that was last updated in 2011. And as far as unassigned balances, it does say, when we talked about our transfers to municipal land and building recently, that does say that if the unreserved balance should be greater than 50%, that the city council can authorize a transfer to the municipal land and building fund. So that does help that a little bit. And then, as we talked in a, in a prior meeting, we will have some adjustments before you to shore up some of our, she hasn't quite made it that far over, but we talked about the airport balance. So once we get those done, we will be looking at what our current fund...
So in a situation like Wayne was kind of alluding to a meeting or two ago, like if we don't get LGA, when does, when do you think a person would find out when that? I mean, when is, when is it knowing how much we're going to get for the LGA?
I would have to look when they certify that, but our totals have been out for a little bit. And I think they would, that would probably be part of the legislation, because I believe it's the governor, doesn't he, that has the final?
Yeah, I think they usually already have that set.
Yeah, so we have our 20, the 2022 amount has been certified prior to our budget being prepared, so that we can see that.
Yeah, and they, and the state would already have the allocation pool that they, how they're spreading out to all the Minnesota governments. So usually they...
It's what?
Oh, on the league side, you can see what other cities are getting.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think you can pretty much...
So we find out that before we're done with our budget?
That's right, yes, yep.
You'll have that number.
So do you think that our reserves should be set higher than that at any point in time, in case the LGA goes away or...
Well, you got, that's just your, that's just your, I'm assigned, you already have reserves set up. I mean, if you looked at your total fund balance for the general fund, it's at 4.6 million dollars, so you've got 1.6 sitting in, committed. You know, what you've gotten restricted is kind of restricted. An outside oversight agency tells you what you can spend it on. It's not really, you don't really have a lot of control over that, except for to spend it in accordance with what the other agency wants. The non-spendable, those are the, basically the IRP receivables. It's out there, it's an asset, but you can't readily convert it into cash that easily because of the way that's structured. These business owners are making their payments, whatever. So they kind of take that out of the books. And then, what's committed and assigned, those are internally set up by you guys for whatever purposes. And we have that somewhat detailed, but not as detailed as Amy has, or you guys have on your books, but we do have kind of some of the purposes of what that's been. And you guys can, that's by council action or by administrative action, and that you have flexibility to switch around based on the city's needs. And that footnote starts on page 20, or page 53 in the footnotes. So you can see under committed, you know, you've got money set aside for fire truck. There, there has been money set aside for severance payouts, pest control, recycling. And then, the assigned, some of that is, you know, again, residual needs from different departments, how they were determined, you know, could be just part of the long-term planning. But in a special revenue fund, for instance, whatever's in the park and rec fund is considered assigned for park and rec. It doesn't mean you guys can't take transfer out of there or whatever, but it, it's not necessarily restricted in any way. It's just that it's kind of targeted or designated to support that special revenue purpose that was created when that fund was created. So, I don't know if that answers your question, Joe, or not?
Yeah, no, it did, yeah.
I love, so you have, you have other restrictions, and, and like I said, this is just the general fund, just your government funds. We haven't even talked about the water and sewer. I told you I was going to put you to sleep tonight, and I mean it. So, again, it was a, you guys did, the city did receive a CARES grant and some funding, but a lot of the money that was received wasn't necessarily targeted for the internal revenue recovery for the city. They were targeted to be, granted out to support local businesses that were affected by COVID. So even though you would say, oh, we received 800,000, we should be looking better than that, it's because it didn't directly, it wasn't an expenditure that, you know, would help cover some of your operating costs. It was actually tagged to help keep the businesses within our community sure of to recover from that long-term impact that they may have suffered. So, when we then flip to page 18, that's your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. So you can kind of get, again, very consolidated, lots of numbers pulled together into big chunks, but you can kind of see, you know, property taxes, revenue made up $2.3 million, intergovernmental, 5.7, and that includes everything considered intergovernmental. So that's coming from another governmental, so that's your LGA, that's any, that's the CARES grant, that's anything that came from the state or the federal government or the county. And it's all kind of lumped into there. In the general fund, most of that was attributed to LGA or some police and fire, some street maintenance type of funding that you get from the state. License, permits and fees, that seems like a big number for permits and licenses, but really, that includes your franchise fees that are charged to the utility companies, Auto Kill, Great Plains Gas, Midco, I think, also, we have it for cable. All of that, all of your total revenues in the general fund were up 340,000 from the prior year roughly. So a lot of that was due to, attributed to just the increase in intergovernmental aid. Your fees were down slightly, property taxes were on point with what was budgeted. Charges for services were down slightly, in some funds more than others. Expenses at $5.3 million roughly, or 5.4, however you want to round it, in the general fund, that was... in the general fund, that was pretty close to last year, only about $21,000 difference. So operations, I think that the reason partly is you guys actually operate pretty lean. So it stays pretty lean. You hadn't seen a big fluctuation. And kind of just kind of walking across, I don't think we had any fund that had any thing that was unexpected. You know, we normally have the street construction fund, usually does incur, you know, one and a half to $2 million of street projects, whatever the amount is for the year. Airport can fluctuate, but that's kind of a non-major fund. But that kind of is tied to the capital grants that get authorized for the year. So overall, I, I feel like the statement of revenues, expenditures, there was nothing there that kind of seemed to be a red flag or something that would be out of the ordinary considering that there were some differences in how 2020 laid out. Starting on page 20 is the enterprise funds. Enterprise funds typically have always been, they've always held the line, stayed in line with their prior years. We don't have a lot of debt in there. We have no debt, which is kind of unusual for most water and wastewater funds. But for instance, like total assets, water and wastewater together, 14 million dollars. Last year, 14,195,000, so roughly down by 100,000. Overall, liabilities last year, 682,000, this year 708,000. Basically, just the increase because of the PRA pension liability, share of the PRA pension liability that we now have to report on the city's books, that, that was your main increase right there for liability. Something kind of out of your control. So overall, the change in net position went down by less than 200,000. If we switch to page 22, or not, that's last year's page, your page would be 21, sorry. Twenty page, 21. Operating revenues are, were at 1.8. In 2019, they were 1.9. So again, very close. Both water and sewer were down a smidgen for charges, the amount of charges for services. And most of the fluctuation actually comes from your industrial usage. So like however it rolls out for, American Crystal is one of the huge ones that will make things fluctuate, depending on how long their campaign goes and how much water there they need to pump through their factory. Some of the other industries do cause, and since we got rid of, since some plot isn't here using it, you know, we used to have a couple of them that kind of could throw a monkey wrench in things, but now it seems like we're kind of just, that's the main one that causes the biggest change. Total expenditures last year, 1.5 million dollars. Total expenditures this year, 1.6. But I think that there was a lot of wastewater, maintenance in the wastewater was up this year, and I think it was no surprise. There were just some general maintenance that was done, and then there were some that had to be done due to break and breaks or whatever. So again, net performance position, you know, I said it was less than 200,000, but really it only went down by 69,000. And normally, we always see a profit in the enterprise funds where we're kind of hovering at a break even or somewhere between 150 to 50,000. So I feel like nothing to be alarmed. Again, I feel like it's, you guys seem to do a good job kind of evaluating where your service revenue rates are at versus what you know the operating expenses are going to be. So I guess I don't have anything else to add with that. That I, everything despite, but it, in all honesty, most of the cities that we did up in this area that I have worked with fared fairly well, but most of them are managed fairly conservatively. And without, our, our town doesn't have the big commercial property sector that can, can cause more of the problems if they're shutting down businesses. And now we've got delinquent property taxes or some other kind of form. We're pretty much a residential community where, you know, we get a lot of, our tax levy hits a bigger sector residential too. So kind of not surprised that we levy this tournament, and it's a delay too. We could see more of a change in delinquencies coming in 2000, in what's been settled out for 2021. I'm trying to think of, in the footnotes, if there's any big, you don't have any debt schedules, so I don't need to really go through what your future five-year cash needs are going to be on that. Just to point out, for some of you, on page 60 is a more detailed version of the general fund operations, and it actually has what was the approved budget, and you can compare that to the total revenue. Total revenue actual came in about $400,000 higher than the final budget, but that was actually mostly due to grants that were awarded, and there was no amendment to the budget to add that in, which is kind of standard. Sometimes when none of that grant is really going to hit operations, it's going to be funded for capital projects or used in a different fashion, kind of like the way the CARES Act went. But that did not hit this fund, so. But expenses overall, expenses overall were also above budget by, or under budget by 231,000. So again, I think there were some expenses that, when we look at that capital outlay and, and some other things that were just kind of put off, and that's what created some of that bigger variance. So with that, I will jump to our, we, we issued an unqualified opinion, and that's the, on all opinion units of the city. And that's the best audit report that you can get on the financial statements. But in the back, we have a letter that we have to report on the city's actual compliance with the Minnesota legal statutes that are in place, that are to be followed by municipal governments. And then also, because we did the auditing according to government auditing standards, we also have to report on some control deficiencies. So some of you that have been on the board for many years, as long as I've been presenting, they, these will not be new to you. Legal compliance findings that we ran into in 2020 were some kind of, one was a housekeeping issue. We issued, it was part of the finding that we had last year in which the TIP district wasn't decertified in time, and there was excess TIP dollars collected in the state. Actually, the state oversight task force within the state auditor's office did review it and flag it. And then there was corrective actions that were to be made. The corrective action did not get done in, within the stated deadline. So we had kind of like a repeat finding on that. But it was done, and we don't have any TIP districts right now that are to be decertified this, in 2020. Maybe one has to be decertified in 2021. We're still trying to determine that. But I believe that that is now on the forefront of administration, and I don't anticipate that will be a finding going forward. The other finding was something that's kind of incidental, but when we do legal compliance, we have to, we have to write up every little thing because we have to act like a state auditor. And the one, we, we did a, we were there to look at bid testing, and we did pull a project. And it wasn't, it wasn't a construction project or an item that had to go out on sealed bids. It was just required that you get quotes. Part of the new Minnesota legal compliance update, probably about two or three, maybe three years ago, they added in their procurement policy that city governments can go get quotes for projects that are below the, or over the 250, or the 25,000 mark, but below the hundred thousand dollar quote price. But they also have to go onto the state's cooperative purchasing site to see if they could get it, that equipment cheaper through the state. And we had, we had, there was nothing in the file that said that was done or not done. So we have to assume, since there's no documentation, that it may not have been done. We wrote it up. It's an easy clarification. We already discussed that with management. I don't think that this is going to be one that's in the future. And if you don't, the specifications have to be lined up exactly right. So it doesn't mean that if there's a dump truck on that you could get, but it doesn't have the right specifications, you don't have to, you just document that you searched it, couldn't find anything that met specifications, boom, you're in compliance. So we have talked about that, but it's not a, a finding that would keep me up at night, I guess.
Question for you. You said that was over 25,000. I remember what.
I, I believe that it's up to 150,000 now, but it, it was 100,000.
I think it, we can pull that on, the League of Minnesota Cities has a really nice guide on that too, Dawn. I would be happy to send you the link to that. I check it often.
Yeah, they complied with all of that on the two that we, I just can't remember off the top of my head because they keep changing that. They keep increasing it up, and so I can't remember off the top of my head now exactly where that one's at. So the other findings that we have are ones that we've had in the past. And they're required to be considered an internal control material weakness under government auditing standards. And the one is that the auditors prepare the financial statements. And part of, and, and sometimes you can get, if the auditors are writing the financial statements purely because there's no, no one in the city has the time available to get those written. And it's not necessarily a skills-based reason. And in the past, we've had that, has been the circumstance, we haven't had, it's been a finding that we have to report, but it's not considered a material weakness. But now they're picky by how many journal entries we book, and so we have to go through and evaluate journal entries. And so it was kind of a year that was a little more challenging. And so again, this is one that you could see again, but the severity of it or the class, like it could move from a material weakness just to a significant deficiency, and that it could just turn into a, clear it all together and not consider it a deficiency. And I think that, that is all the findings that we had. Again, like I said, there are, two of them were on your report last year. We did, I'm retiring, so next year we get to see somebody else, finally. We did have a chance to sit down with Amy, Ryan, and Kathy and meet with a new shareholder from our office that will be kind of overseeing the city audit going forward. And we kind of discussed some housekeeping issues. They're not, they're not part of the audit findings or anything, just kind of best practices and things that Amy already knew about. We just wanted to make sure we had the audit done before we kind of put some of that stuff into place. But you've got capital project fund, the street capital projects fund. And normally, capital projects fund is created when you have a project. And when the project is done, it's closed out, and money is transferred in to cover the costs that maybe not, hadn't been, you know, like if you bond for it, usually the bond proceeds are put in there, and that money is used to spend it for the project. Or if you're transferring money, or if you've got a state maintenance grant, or whatever, that's all goes into that and used to cover the project costs. And the capital project fund eventually kind of zeros itself out. The street project in the city of Kirkston is kind of an ongoing capital projects because every year you guys kind of have a scheduled set of street improvements that are going to be made, and there's nothing wrong with that. But every year, the project should be evaluated on what's going to cover the cost of that. And most of the time, it's available money coming in from the special assessments on prior street projects that have been approved, and we've got that money coming in. And that's all sitting out there in the improvement fund. So we got an improvement fund with like $8 million in, and we got a capital projects fund with a negative $8 million in. And what we recommend is that we kind of get rid of that because it maybe skews really well how much money you have available. Because way back, yonder in the back pages is this negative $8 million. And so we kind of recommend that transfers be made to true up that street improvement fund. We also think that the other capital projects fund that's in there be evaluated whether it's going to be used in the future or whether it's time to close that one out. And I think that's an arena project, if I remember, when the arena construction was done. And you have two debt service funds with, I don't know, I think they're minimal. Two debt service projects, one that we had way back when the Johnson Control contract was done. That was a long time ago. I was young. It's got $29, or it has only like a deficit cash of 600 deficit in there. All it needs is a fund transfer to clear it out, and I recommend we zero that. There's no reason that that be out there. And special assessment bonds, those bonds, you haven't had special assessment bonds, I don't think, since the 90s. Again, a long time ago. That should also be zeroed out. I actually really do believe that any bond funds, once the bonds are paid off, you want to make sure and close out those funds so there's no. to make sure and, um, close out those funds, so there's no misconception that somehow that money in that debt service fund can only be used for debt service. And that can happen if you've had, um, special debt, special property tax levies that were only for the debt service. So, uh, we got all that cleaned up, we had a good meeting. I, I'm willing to answer any questions.
Overall, the city's sitting pretty good.
Yep, kind of, I, I mean, maybe you're getting tired of me saying that, but it's still staying pretty strong.
Yeah.
Um, you know, even when Tracy came here, um, from our Thibor Falls office, and she's just, you know, surprised that there's no debt in that, and, you know, just, I don't think that the lack of debt is because we're not maintaining the things that we need to maintain, you know, sometimes it could be you're, you know, holding off on doing needed infrastructure improvements, but I don't really see that as the case, um, I think you're just utilizing the resources in the fashion. Um, and I've heard a couple of different times, you know, during the time I've been auditing, you know, this might be the year we have, we issue debt for this project or this or that, and so it's not like it's not, you know, that that's your whole driving force, is we're not gonna, um, we're gonna, you know, defer some improvements or something that's necess, needed in the community for that. So, looks good.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
You do a good job.
Thanks.
Good luck on your retirement.
It happens.
Any further discussion? There ain't none, can I have roll call, please?
Cavalier.
Aye.
Pressler.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbretton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Your Honor, item 8.03 is a resolution approving the grant application for the Kirkston Municipal Kirkwood Field American Rescue Grant Program, ARGP.
Do you have a motion to approve this resolution?
I have a motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Dawn, second.
Second.
Second by Steve, thank you. Amy, brief discussion?
Yes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Um, this particular grant is part of the Airport Rescue Grant Program, it's in response to COVID relief. The Airport Commission did see this before them on September 16th at their meeting, and has recommended it for your approval. We are eligible to receive $32,000 in funding, and the purposes outlined in this grant are costs related to operations, personnel, cleaning, sanitation, janitorial services, combating the spread of pathogens at the airport, and debt service payments, and no local match is required. So at the, our airport manager, our airport commission, myself, kind of think it's a no-brainer that we would accept this, the airport commission recommended moving it forward for your approval. And then we did have our representatives from SEH with us, Melissa and Lindsay, that were available to answer any questions, I sent it to them as well, just to review, make sure we had all the information we need, so asking for your approval today that we can respond, um, with our grant application, it is due by the end of November.
Thank you, Amy, further discussion? There ain't none, can I have roll call, please?
Cavalier.
Aye.
Pressle.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbretton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item 8.04 is a resolution to hire a community development director effective September 30th, 2021, Your Honor.
Thank you, do you have a motion to approve this resolution?
I make that motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Clayton, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Christie, discussion, Amy.
Your Honor. I am about to tell you what I know. Um, we received a few applications for our community development director, this gentleman is from McIntosh, relocated from Tennessee to be near family, has a very strong background in economic development, has worked for both an independent economic development board, is accustomed to how municipalities work, going before council, brought us some, a binder of his previous work, so the interview committee was myself, Monica, and our HR, the mayor, we had Mitch Berg, who is now with UMC, he was with us, um, when Christine did her presentation, he's been a former city administrator and also has a strong background in economic development, and we invited Greg Hefta, our building official, to join us, because those are two, uh, positions that'll work closely together. His name is Robert Barnes, Jr., um, I have visited with him and, um, extended a conditional offer pending background check in the city council's approval. He answered in ways that were really pleasing to me, um, said the things that I was hoping to hear, he's someone with a strong background, some of the things I want to highlight for you from, from our interview were, um, talking about going out, understanding our community, going out and looking for, um, businesses to bring in, also talked about the importance of expansion, and that sometimes your existing businesses are overlooked, I appreciated that comment, I appreciated the comments about going out and marketing, and he has experience with target mar, targeted marketing, um, understands and is knowledgeable about some of the challenges and the path that has led us to where we are today, and is up for that, up for that challenge. I'm really excited about him, spoke to him today, he was very pleased with, um, the conditional offer, it is my recommendation to you that, um, you approve this recommendation from me, and I think I'm speaking on behalf of our entire interview committee as well.
He is a, um, what I found out, he is a team player, I mean, he's gonna involve not only our department heads in anything with economic development, but I think he'll work closely with our city administrator. Um, I really thought he was, you know, with the questions asked, I don't have the binder in front of me that I took notes on, but I feel that he was spot on with a lot of the questions that were asked. Um, there was one hiccup in there, and he didn't have a problem explaining what it was, um, and I know, uh, Monica did a little research on it, and he was spot on with his answers, so I think he'll be a good fit, I think he'll work well with everybody, he'll work well with council, so.
So what, what was his previous experience again?
I don't have it in front of me, he has served and reported to an economic development board, he has some certifications, some of the things that we had hoped for, and that I had initially thought we may be having to help people get some certifications in economic development, um, am I forgetting anything? I don't, I don't have that in front of me, I apologize, I didn't bring his, um, resume down, but, but very strong in economic development, that has been the basis for most of his jobs, other than some of his very most recent ones, um, excited about the opportunity for a position that comes up to do what he is strong in.
Where, where, where did he work at?
He was from Tennessee, and I'd have to look up, um, where that was, I can get that for you.
Yeah, I think he did, he, he was originally from Tennessee, did work in Tennessee, he was out in, uh, southwest Wyoming, I think.
Casper, Wyoming.
There you go, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
You were there, you got anything to add, Greg?
Don't forget to step up to the microphone, please, thank you.
Yeah, I was part of that interview committee, and I just thought Robert Barnes was an excellent candidate, he answered everything just like Dale and Amy were saying, spot on, and, I mean, I think, I guess the way I would approach it, just say, I would like to work with this gentleman, that's kind of the way I would say it, so, economic development and projects he's worked with, multi-million dollar projects.
Industrial parks, yep.
So, I, I thought he was a spot on candidate.
There's, there's certainly benefit in, um, having someone that has experience and understands the, the path of moving projects forward in a municipality and a, and a public body, it is certainly different than if you are working with private entities, that's something that I think is really beneficial for us as a, as a city, that have someone that can really, need some time to understand our community and some of the outstanding projects, but doesn't need to be necessarily taught how to present to a council or a board, and understands at what levels, um, you need to check in and get approval before moving on to the next, that will certainly serve us well, and will put us a little bit ahead than if we were, if we were getting someone that didn't have that public body experience.
Did he list any industrial projects?
He did, he had a whole binder for me, he did take it, he did take it back, and I will, I will pull, um, his resume for you, but yes, he had worked on, I believe it was a 400-acre, um, industrial park, and getting that up with infrastructure and those things, so, uh, similar, but on a larger scale than what, you know, we're looking at on our Colburn property, um, had done, like I said, targeted marketing on, on certain projects.
Has he ever worked in, say, in the state of Minnesota, so he has, he has any idea of all the different, uh, uh, things that the state can offer to help start a business, like, you know, there's MIF and TIPS and all that kind of stuff?
Has not, to my knowledge, worked, um, in the state of Minnesota, but truly with, with his experience and background, a lot of times it's understanding the right questions to ask and being put in contact with the right people, I would not anticipate any trouble, um, him working with our, our state offices at Minnesota Deed and those things to get up to speed. We do also have really wonderful resources at our university, and he mentioned that and acknowledged that several times, which I think is, that's something I would, I wanted to hear, um, and then we had Mitch Berg in the interview, who is with the university, that is also a really good resource, he's at the Vaden Center, there's Christine, that all of those things, we expect to see a little bit stronger partnerships than perhaps we have seen in the past.
Did we set any kind of salary?
Yes. Would you like me to announce it publicly? I wasn't planning to do that, but, um...
You can send it to me.
Okay, it was, I will say this, it was within, um, the budget that we presented to you for 2022.
Was it, was, you say he lives in McIntosh now, is he planning on commuting, or?
Planning on commuting, yes, yep.
He, uh, he was aware of, uh, what goes on in our community, he was aware of the Oxcart, and, um, our, uh, farmer's market, and events coming up, and, um, he wanted, he also mentioned that he's gonna be, just because he lives in McIntosh, he's gonna be a part of the community, he's gonna be here for events, and, and out there something happening in our city, he's gonna be here, so.
Oh, it isn't that far to drive?
No. Cup of coffee.
How many applicants did we get, Amy, did you say a couple?
Oh, total, total, I'm not sure, there were, um, three that we reviewed, um, applications on, and actually, one happened to be Mr. Barnes' spouse, but, um, she contacted us actually when we were offering an interview and, and suggested that she thought that Robert actually had a stronger, more relevant background, and we appreciated that, he was also, um, on our list for an interview, so.
Further discussion? There ain't none, can I have roll call, please?
Cavalier.
Aye.
Pressle.
Aye.
Clatt.
Aye.
Bedbretton.
Aye.
Melby.
Aye.
Jurdie.
Aye.
Erickson.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, give them the good news, Amy.
I will do so, thank you all very much, I'm, I really am looking forward to, um, getting him in, and actually, he is available to start this week, so knowing that there is time that will be needed to work with, um, our Cheetah staff, myself, our staff members, and just get acquainted with some of the outstanding projects, inquiries we've had, the sooner, um, we can get him in, really the better for, for him and for the city and Cheetah as well, so.
Right, thank you, reports, Amy.
Yes, um, since our last council meeting, um, we had our proclamation for, um, National Assisted Living Week, and that week I did get to go and visit the summit, and talk to residents just about some of the things going on at the city, they wanted to know a little bit about me, that was a really nice visit, um, they asked some really tough questions, they are very informed, um, I do plan on at any time, I told them that, that they would like me to come back and report, if that's on a regular basis, or they just want to call me and let me know, I would be absolutely thrilled to go back over and, um, and visit with them, or answer questions, report on, on city activities, that was nice, and it's nice to be able to go to individuals that maybe can't always come, or don't for various reasons, come join us here in council chambers, so I plan on doing that again. Um, and then, as we just discussed, held our interview for community development director, and I'm really, really pleased, and feel like the city will be blessed to have Mr. Barnes on, on our leadership team here at the city, and that is all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Amy. Brandon.
I'm sure everybody's noticed, most of the road construction's done, for the most part, uh, all the black dirt's back in, and Rickard's getting busy putting sod down, so, um, there's been a lot of questions this year, he, he's had, he's had trouble keeping his sod alive, um, out at his house, he had to replant, uh, typically, he cuts and it comes back on its own without, uh, having to reseed, and he's had difficulty in the last couple of years, but he did save enough for us, so he's got just enough to do the city project this year. Um, the water department is doing a leak sweep through town, so that's just essentially listening on everybody's outdoor, uh, spigot, and, uh, if they can hear a leak, they, they have a, a phone they hold on the, on the outside spigot, and they can hear if a service is leaking and not surfacing, so, if you see them coming through the yard, that's what they're doing. Um, the street department last week called some black dirt from the Ag Innovation Campus, thanks to Jim and them for donating black dirt, we were almost out, so now we got a good stockpile of black dirt, and the wastewater department's doing their annual cleaning as well, they're in the, uh, southeast corner, they, they do about a quarter of the town every fall, just run the mains, make sure everything's running good, and, and get everything clean, and, and they're in that southeast corner this fall, so that's all I got.
Thank you, Brandon.
Have you set, Brandon, have you set a date for fall cleanup, or are we gonna have that or not?
Uh, we have, and I don't know right on hand, I'll have that for you next meeting.
Yep, it's the last weekend in October, it's last full weekend, so it'd be like the 25th, or whatever it is, it's the 25th through the 29th.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan.
Just kind of to touch on, you know, Kim coming from Brady Mart's tonight to go through our audit, um, it's been a pleasure for me to get a chance to work with Kim, um, we talked when we got together, Amy and I and Kathy, with Brady Mart's about starting our audit a lot sooner than what we have done in the past with the city, this year they came the very last week of May, and with these changes that we're going to do internally, um, our goal is to hopefully have our audit all done and completed by the time we get to the end of May of next year. Um, they're helping us implement some new processes on how we, um, have things flow through our system, how we're tying things back to our general ledger, keeping things in balance, um, they're giving us some excellent working papers to have as building tools to assist us with these things that we do as far as reporting, um, as far as some of the reporting that goes to safes, you know, for our TIF, our budget stuff all goes there, the, um, IRP loans, how they get reported and stuff like that, but, um, a lot of the ones that we've done, they've been waiting for an audited financial statement from the city for a while, so now it'll be time to do some catch-up stuff with that, and then this week, of course, we'll have to get our stuff filed with the county, but, you know, Sam over at the county too, have to say, he's been awesome to work with, because I can email him a question, and he gets back to me right away with all this information, has been very nice to work with. Also, um, with the, um, American Rescue Plan, um, we do have a committee that we are working with, and we'll be looking at these things coming up, and how we can look at lost revenue, and then getting these dollars in place, because we have to do our... then getting these dollars in place, because we have to do our reporting for that in October here. So that's coming up very, very quickly. Any other questions?
I was trying to go on the end, but Amy, can we get the act rules and that from compare in 19 and, or 20 and 21 now?
For 2020?
Yeah, for 2020, is that the audit's done, or?
Only soon, yes, but as, as I mentioned, and some of that ties to what Kim had said, there are some transfers we need to bring before you to request, closing some of those funds and transferring. That will affect like our general fund reserves, so is hoping to have those done, which we hope to have at our next meeting if we can get those journal entries written.
I mean, I have time between now and December, as I always say, just so we can get that some out.
Absolutely, yes.
We will, we're actually definitely working on that now, and trying to get our month-end closed process done so much faster than what it's been done to, and actually put some numbers together and stuff.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, Ryan. Greg, anything to add?
Just some basic reporting regarding construction going on right now, and the Ag Innovation Site, they basically have most of the site prepped and worked over as far as the storm sewer, water, and site plan, as far as the building location. They do have a, they filled the backfill with Class 5, so it's, it's all looking pretty good, so. And then as far as the new fire project, they basically have a water service in there, they did flush it, but they haven't pressure tested, that I'm aware of as of today, and basically they had a bunch of piers and foundations and footings put in that I've been inspecting and watching over as it's going through the construction, and they still have a few more to go as well, so. And I did have one hope to see a new home come through pretty soon for a new construction residential in town, so I'll, I'll just be quiet about that until that does happen, but it's been pretty quiet on the residential front.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Chief Roebert.
All right, just a couple of quick things. We had our fire apparatus pumps serviced and all of our auto extrication tools, I should say, serviced and certified by the testing company, and, oh, excuse me, they all passed extremely well, so that just is kudos to my guys that extremely take care of those very, very expensive equipment, and will be able to get several more years of use out of them. Fire Prevention Week is coming up, October 3rd through the 9th. We'll be having our open house on the 9th from 10 to 1. The community is invited down there, hope to see some of our council folks down there, and we have a lot of different activities that we do down there, kids have a lot of fun, we have a small little lunch for everybody, and door prizes and all kinds of stuff, so please come down. Last thing, I'd like to have everybody keep the Bruce Parr family and their thoughts and prayers. Bruce Parr was a firefighter for the city of Crookson for over 23 years. He retired in 2002. He was my first partner when I got hired on, he mentored me along for many years, and he got to me where I am today, and I gotta appreciate everything that he's done for me and what they've done, or what he's done for the city in all of his years of service. Councilman Erickson and Melby were both on at the same time, and they know that Bruce did an excellent job, so please keep his family in your thoughts and prayers. His funeral's gonna be October 5th, so that's all I got.
Thank you. Jake.
I've been just working with scheduling youth hockey games for a little while, preparing to open up the CSC. We'll be opening up our event, ICE will be ready to 18th. UMC Hockey will have their first home series the 22nd and 23rd. I'll be speaking with Wyatt from CaroX this week on Wednesday, we're gonna go over just some programs and stuff that we're offering and opening up this winter. With that, winter registration for our programs is open now on our website, so registration is ready to go. And Park Crew, they've been mowing, catching up, and then they also started blowing water lines today out of the softball complex and splash pads, so that's all I have.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
Paul must thought I was gonna call on him next. He doesn't.
Tell you, wait for me to walk all the way up here and then ask Chad if he had any questions.
I thought about it, I thought about it.
So if you remember back in May, we had a 45-minute thunder shower come through that just dumped on us, and at that time, the juvenile center had their roof peeled back, and they had a lot of water damage. In fact, the juvenile center was shut down for a few months, the security side opened back up, but unfortunately, the majority of their revenue to operate that facility comes from the non-secure side, and that, the non-secure side is going through an extensive renovation because of the damage, and so I just found out this morning that the Corrections Board has decided to close the juvenile center temporarily, both, you know, the, the secure and non-secure side, until the non-secure side is completely done. And that's not gonna be done until next June to October. So what that means for us is, we have always had, I mean, since I've been here, since 1990, since Clayton, before that, had a juvenile center to bring our juveniles. We don't have that now, so we're gonna be transporting juveniles to an outside facility when we have an in custody arrest type situation. Moorhead and Bemidji are the two primary locations. Fortunately, we don't have a lot of in custody arrests, but I just wanted the council to know that, that it's gonna put us in a little bit of a bind for a while. Because we have a juvenile detention center, we've never had to be licensed or certified by the state to hold a juvenile in our facility. A lot of police departments throughout the state are licensed and certified, so we have been in contact with the state because we know there's gonna be that situation where because of weather or some other type of situation in the wintertime, or whatever, a facility might not have room. We're going to end up holding a juvenile for a while. So we're working with Andy Larson from the Corrections Center, the sheriff's office is in the same situation, and so the three of us and the, and the state, a couple of different boards through the state, we've met once, and we were really hoping for a, a different resolution, including some, some secure rooms outside the jail portion of that building, but that's not gonna work out, so. Just to let you know, we're gonna, we're gonna have some transport time, and, and, you know, we're, we're down patrol officers, so this is gonna kind of, you know, be another added burden, but again, hopefully it won't be crazy.
Added, added expense, probably?
Well, yeah, because we're gonna have to take somebody, if, if, you know, right now we, we've pulled Detective Breckenhoff, detective, and put him on the street until our current trainee gets through field training and he can go on the street. So we're down to one detective, and then Darren and I are helping out with different situations and helping out patrol during the day also, so we, we may have some added cost for transportation, yeah. Or just monitoring a juvenile in our facility, we, we, somebody has to be with that juvenile, you know, 24 hours, however long they're there. Any other questions about that? Any other compensation back from the juvenile center for that, or no, not really? Probably not? No, I hadn't, I've thought of that, but I don't think that that's going to be an option. Not sure how else to word that, other than no. Thanks for putting it nicely. Anything else? Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Paul. Chad, anything to add?
I'm happy to announce that I'm moving our new Linux-based VPN solution out of testing into production. It's in the Virgin Islands environment, and we have about 17 machines that have been connecting to it over the other part of Las Vegas. And real trial by fire was when Ryan used it on vacation all the way over to Virgin Island, which he performs very, very well. New equipment has arrived for some upgrades to public access channel 3, I'll be putting those into effect this week. I'll be working with Lieutenant, Lieutenant.
Silver.
For security briefing with the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension tomorrow, and then also meeting with Jake to visit with LiveOn, they're our streaming provider for the camera system in place out at the arena, just to make sure that both of those cameras are up and running and active all the time, obviously, and that's all I have.
Thanks, Chad. All right, start with Tom tonight.
Good to see Jake here. That's good, I know.
Yep. Delane?
Just had a couple of questions on, you know, the, on Fisher Avenue where we had the pet receptacles for the waste there, is there plans to get them put back into place?
Oh, the, the, like the doggy bag station? I was wondering that myself last night. I'll bet I can talk to Jake about that, and we can get it all settled up. Yes.
Thanks.
That's all I had, thanks.
Thanks, Delane. Joe?
No report, Your Honor.
Don?
I have to thank his home for Braden and his department for all the good work you've done on our city's streets. You had good comments, especially on the neighborhood and that one road. Thank you very much. And I want to thank Amy for touring the Board for with us. We had our committee on the bus, and it was good to have you on the bus.
Thank you. Thank you for the invite. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it was fun, we had a good time. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Don. Clayton?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Steve?
I don't know, we've gotten some comments on the lighting on our walkways and paths at night, I don't know if anybody else hears it, but I think it's something we gotta, you know, kind of maybe Brandon or whoever we can discuss it with to find out what's the best ability. I don't know if we ever did get lights on the ones on the north end there, as far as trails go. You know, we had talked to, we had a discussion as a council to put lights up there or whatever, but I don't know where that went, but there's also other paths that are very dark, and I guess my feeling, if we're gonna have all these trails or whatever, I think we need to have adequate lighting so they can get used, especially when it gets dark at 5:30 and people want it still nice, so we can still take walks and stuff, so just like to kind of work on that over the winter here, whatever, see if we can get something rolling on that, and.
I think we. I too have had some comments about the lighting on the paths, so.
I believe we had checked on the ones on the, remind me of the name of the path. Kind of by me.
You got the one on Evergreen?
Yeah, yeah, it's called like three different names, and I mix them all up. Okay, that's the one. We'll go Evergreen for right now. One of the challenges there was how tall the lights would be for the residential area, if you have them too short for snow plowing was a challenge, too tall for the residence was a challenge, and I would have to look back, it was when Scott Reapell was here, and Pat, I think, we did get a quote on some, but probably would need to take, take a look at that again.
I know a couple people brought that up, that they remember us discussing it, but then we dropped the ball, which is true, I guess we haven't gone anywhere with it, so I'm gonna keep that on our to-do list, I guess.
Okay.
I know, I know Pat looked into it, and I never saw any numbers, is all I was gonna say. I can ask them.
I might be able to dig them out of, from the abyss of my email.
All I know is he started the process, and I never saw it finished.
I'm gonna keep rolling on it, I guess that's my concern, so.
I know the ones they put up on Fairfax, you know, they're, it's great, but, you know, we had that, they're not gonna work, I don't think, back there, just because we had to take one down, it lit up his house like Fort Knox, so, you know, I don't know if there's.
Mayor, were the ones on Fairfax, if I remember right, I think we just had Otter Tail add additional lights on the poles, didn't we?
Right, right.
So our cost there, I think, was the electricity, but that would be a challenging solution for that residential area, for sure.
Exactly. So I don't know what the solution, I mean.
I know at one time we talked about like a four-foot pole with a little light on it, you know?
Right.
Back there on behind, like, say, Reckons there, I mean, it'd be right in their backyard.
There, I think there was a quote, and I, I will see if I can dig it out of my email, I don't remember if it came from Scott Reapell or, or Pat, but some of the options were costly, depending on what they went with, but I will see what I can find, and I'll work with Brandon on pulling some stuff together.
You might have to put some sort of, like, say, where they got the residence right on the yard, you might have to put a shield on that side of it, so it just lights the path part.
And, you know, I heard both sides, you know, some of the people say that are on those trails say, it's not gonna matter to us, or whatever, and then somewhere like, yeah, it might, depending if you put a shield around the backside that's facing their house, or however you have to do it, but most of the people I talked to had concerns about it, just want the lighting because in their backyard, it helps their, you know, lighting security for themselves, so.
All right, thanks, Steve. Wayne?
No report tonight.
Thank you. Um, I, oh, I forget about Christie.
Well, oh, well.
Sorry, sorry.
I have nothing to report, so.
You're pretty, you're pretty quiet.
Sorry.
All right, thanks, Christie.
Yep.
I'd also like to offer my prayers and thoughts to Bruce Parr, he was fixture in his community a long, long time, always friendly down at the Auto Parts Place, so. I'm also, this Saturday is the Cornstalk Jamboree down at the Green Space, that goes from 10 to 2. And beautiful weather out there, so find a time to check out the fall colors before they leave, I guess, we're pretty close to peak time, I think. There is no ways and means tonight, so if nothing else comes before council, we are adjourned.